Okay, welcome, everybody. The school board is having a work session this evening, and I will call the work session to order. I would like to call this work session of the Prince William County School Board to order. The purpose of the meeting is, of the work sessions, receive presentation from BWP and Associates, a superintendent search firm which has been awarded a contract by the Prince William County Public Schools to conduct a national search for a superintendent to replace Dr. Walts upon his retirement in June of 2020, 21, 2021. Due to the pandemic and medical conditions preventing their physical attendance, school board members Lily Jesse, Diane Ralston, Adele Jackson will be participating in the work session from their homes by electronic means as permitted by school board policy 139. During this meeting, if for any reason there should be an absence of a physical quorum of other members of the school board, electronic participants shall be conducted under the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 23rd, 2020 through amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutory required or necessary to continue operations of Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of the school board's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Okay, so as we go to the agenda this evening, we are thrilled to have our search firm here in attendance in person. I want to thank the staff of the administration. For those of you who've joined us this evening, we're thrilled to have you, and the school board is going to be looking forward to having the support of everyone in the school division as we go through this process this year. This will be probably the board's, you know, outside of reopening schools, the most important, most important thing we do as a school board, probably in our careers here. So, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce our search firm and our team. BWP and Associates is a national search firm which specializes in assisting school boards that are seeking superintendents. Tonight, BWP will outline the superintendent's, hold on one second, is it, did I miss, BWP, right?
That's correct.
Right, I keep, I'm looking at my, I have a couple typos here. BWP will outline the superintendent's search process and anticipate a timeline to include multiple opportunities for community involvement and public input. I'd like to introduce Dr. Kevin Kastner, who served an 11-year tenure as superintendent of the Albemarle County Public Schools and has conducted or assisted with more than 15 superintendent searches in Virginia and is on the Board of Directors for BWP. Dr. Wayne Harris is here at the podium. He holds a doctorate from the Urban Superintendent Program at Harvard's Graduate School of Education, and he has served 11 years as superintendent of the Roanoke City Public Schools. He will also participate in our search. I will turn it over to Dr. Harris at this point. Dr. Harris, welcome, and thank you for coming from Roanoke this evening, and Dr. Kastner, thank you for coming from Charlottesville. Please carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board. Kevin and I are thrilled that you have engaged us to assist you with your search for your next superintendent. If you would pay attention to the first slide there, this is the Prince William County School Board. You have made it very clear that your purpose as a board is to provide a world-class education. In essence, you have made very public that your conviction, your commitment, that your overall purpose is to ensure that all students will be able to reach their aspirations, their goals, and their dreams. You are very correct. The most important decision that a school board will ever make is to select a superintendent, which is one of the five basic responsibilities of a board, to select your next superintendent. Prince William County has a stellar history in terms of tenure of superintendents. Your current superintendent's been with you 15 years. And prior to that, if my math serves me correct, Dr. Kelly was here 18 years. That sends a strong message about the leadership and the support of this board and this community, wanting not only stability, but expecting the very best, so that all of the decisions that you reach will ensure that the wealth that is included in every single child will be discovered by those children. As my third-grade teacher admonished us often, "Once a task is first begun, never leave it until it's done. Be the task great or small, do it well or not at all." I would say to you that Ms. Jessie P. Jones, my third-grade teacher, would say to this board and this community, looking back over the last several decades, that you have done it well. So providing a world-class education for each and every child is the goal, and Kevin and I are pleased that we will have an opportunity to help you find the best candidate who will carry forward with your motto. Our commitment to you as representatives of BWP is that we will identify for your selection candidates who will meet a profile of experiences, qualities, and characteristics that have been developed based on our talking with any and everyone in this community, that includes employees and others who live here, to tell us what it is you want us to look for. Kevin and I, again, thank you for this opportunity to work with you. I'll be brief, but let me tell you a little bit about the team, Dr. Kevin Kastner and me, who will be working with you. And Kevin may expound on this later, but Kevin is a retired school superintendent, 11 years in his position, and he'll talk about some of the other things that we do together. You've already heard a little bit about Wayne Harris. I spent 25 years next door in Fairfax County, and as I said to a couple of members of this board, "We're pleased that you've engaged us," but finally, I'm employed by Prince William because I tried that a number of years ago, we won't talk about that. And before you could hire me, Fairfax hired me, but we won't be mad about that. BWP has extensive knowledge of Virginia school districts in particular, but school districts around the country. Kevin and I together have completed 33 searches over the last 10 years. Kevin has broader experience because he's literally done searches from New York to Wisconsin and everything in between. When you engage BWP, you're talking about a national network of directors and associates, most of whom are retired superintendents who work specifically in the area where they were superintendent and/or where they live, and it allows us to have a relationship with numerous colleagues, friends across the country, so it allows us then to bring you candidates who are great, match, and fit. And from the outset, we make recommendations. This school board will make all of the decisions related to who you interview and ultimately who you select as your next superintendent. So let's talk just for a moment about that record of success. You can see in front of you a number, and we've only given you a sampling, of the searches that we have done. You can see those in Virginia that we've done. Arlington, we completed several months ago. Harrisonburg, Virginia, Williamsburg, James City County, Alexandria City, Falls Church, Chesterfield, and Winchester. And then we've included a couple of other larger districts that Kevin participated in, and we are pleased with the record, and we bring that same commitment to you, that we will do the very best we can to bring you top candidates from which you will select who you hire. Tonight, we're going to talk about the process, and so let me briefly review the steps in the process. We use a four-step process, which we will go into detail about so that you understand what will happen, both in our engagement with you, but also with community. You will talk about the search timeline. That is something that we need you to review and then make some decisions about when we will return, when we will do community engagement, how many days, how many groups. We will then come back one more time. The community engagement will involve scheduling, meetings, individual interviews, group meetings, public forums, a range of other activities, as well as a survey, and Dr. Kastner will go into some of that detail. We will talk with you about marketing the vacancy. I will tell you that it's already posted on the BWP website, and we've already had inquiries even before we put the final notice up. We will talk about salary considerations, the keys to a successful search, and then you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and receive clarification. So these are the four steps in the process, and the bulk of the time that we have with you this evening, we will be giving you the specifics of each of the four steps within the process. And tonight, we begin with specifications as you are making decisions and telling us about timelines and the like. So let me just get into the first step, specification. So what is that, what does it look like? The specification step is the beginning of the process where we will engage employees and community in discussion. There will be time blocks over a three-day period throughout each day and into the evening for those three days, where employees and members of the community will have an opportunity to come before either Kevin or me or both, and will be responding to questions. When we get to community engagement, we'll tell you what those are. Specification also is a time when we are identifying the experiences, the qualities, and the skills the next superintendent must possess and demonstrate to be able to continue this commitment for world-class education. This is one of the three questions that we will pose to each and every group and/or person that we interview with. It helps us then create the leadership profile and the description. After we have completed all of our meetings, we will take that information and put it in the form of a draft document called a leadership profile that describes what it is you want us to look for in your next superintendent, and that helps us as we are vetting applications. We will then come to you following the community engagement process and present to you that draft and seek your approval so that it may be posted with the vacancy, which would be posted not only on your website and on the BWP website, but in other locations, and Kevin will speak to that. And then we will begin recruiting heavily. As I've said to you, we've already had inquiries, so in essence, the moment it hit the website, the recruiting process began. The other part of specifications has to do with considering competitive salary parameters and confidentiality, and I'm going to call on Kevin to come forward at this time, and he'll take it from here, and I will be interjecting with him. Before he comes, each of you have a packet with hard copies of various documents, including the PowerPoint. There are other documents. We wanted you to have the hard copy in front of you in order that you might make notes because there are some decisions that we will be asking you to reach relative to timelines and the like.
I would just remind the board members, so we will ask questions at the end of the presentation, and that'll make it a little bit easier to flow as we wrap up the presentation. We'll do questions at the end, it'll be easier for me to follow the folks at home especially.
Thank you. Board members, I'm very pleased to be here. Ed Kelly and I have played a few rounds of golf together, and to come into a building under his name, you know, it's an honor. We know about your school system. We've watched it. We know its reputation, and I think we're going to bring a lot of that to the table when we're going to be working with candidates. One of the things that your board is going to be engaging in starting tonight, this is new to you. None of you have been part of a superintendent search. There's a lot of information that we're going to present that you're going to need to reflect on, and we're just starting all this. And we're going to have opportunities when we do community engagement to meet with each board member individually. So a lot of this, as we're trying to in a very transparent way, not only to make this presentation to board members, but we want this to be to your entire community. We think it's very important because you, in essence, are trusting us to go out into your community and listen to all the people and report back what we're hearing so that it might confirm or even maybe give you a few additional things to think about as you're going to be deciding on who's going to be the next superintendent. So it's a process of trust, is us working with you, us working with your community, and as Wayne has mentioned, we've done this more than a few times, and we know this process will work. And we want to try to honor it in every way, even though times are different now, and we're going to have to say, or talk about how we might adjust because of that, the fact that I'm wearing this mask, and it's the first time I've had a suit on in eight On the packet you have, on the left-hand side, you have a brochure that talks about the BWP process. It can be found on our website for anyone in the community that wants to see what we mean by the four steps. You're going to see a sample of the PowerPoint. You're going to see a search flow chart. You're going to see the resumes for Wayne and I, and you're also going to see a sample announcement. We've chosen the one from Arlington that is a concrete example that we're going to refer to in a bit. On the right-hand side, you're seeing in the beginning the key decisions that board members are going to have to make to guide us under the parameters of this process. We'll come back to this as we go through. You're also going to see a sample timeline that we're going to talk about in a few minutes, a detail of what the community engagement process is all about, an example of the master schedule in which we engaged several hundred people in the Arlington community, and we did a online survey, and how many people and different groups that we could have the opportunity to interact with on a schedule that will need your blessing to include what you think are the stakeholders in your community. You're also going to see a sample of a survey. We used DeKalb as an example that we'll have to work with staff to present to you for your sign-off. So what I'd like to start with, one of the things we're going to need to know is salary. And here's what we're going to recommend. First off, you need to understand there are 18,000 school systems in the United States. Most school systems have 4,000 students. You're 35th, so you're in the upper 1%. If you're in the upper 1%, the people that work in organizations that have thousands of employees, you have 90,000 students, your salary parameters are going to be commensurate with the size of your district, so you're going to have a higher salary. And you want to be not regionally competitive, you want to be nationally competitive. So when we advertise, we'll recommend that you consider a nationally competitive salary based on commensurate experience. You have a superintendent that's been here 15 years, so his salary is going to be on the very high end, as opposed to someone coming in and had not been a superintendent or hadn't been a superintendent for not as many years. We want you to have that flexibility, and you'll do your homework, and then you want to be able to do something that's fair, but also data-driven. So we would recommend that the parameters on salary would be considered nationally competitive, and if you would agree with that, then we would include that in the announcement. The next thing that candidates are going to want to know, are you going to have a confidential search? So the name of the candidate that gets the job, that name will become public. All other candidates, their names will not become public. Why do we want to do this? If you want to have the largest possible pool, candidates know that there's a risk if you go to certain places like South Carolina where they have to announce the three candidates, and two people are going to be at odds with their board because they're not going to get the job. If you go to Florida, every name that applies is out there, and you're going to see much smaller pools. In Virginia, you have the opportunity as a board to do a confidential search. So if you want to attract the strongest candidate pool, then going for a confidential search will enable you to do that. You have people that are, one, to consider this job, that are successful in the jobs that they have. They have families. To get their name out there and then they not get a job or the confidentiality is breached, is a game changer in the whole idea of the trust and the respect that we want to give this process. So we recommend a confidential search. And again, if we want to discuss this later, that'll be just fine. So that's one of the areas that we're going to need board direction. We're going to now then need to talk about a timeline. Now, when you talk about a timeline and you have an example timeline, you are engaging in this search and probably as an ideal timeline as you can have in doing a superintendent search. The tricky part now is because of COVID, any good superintendent is very, very committed to making things work in their school system, but hopefully, as we cross the beginning of the next school, you're talking January, February, or March, they might want to consider an opportunity to work with this system and still remain loyal to the transition in their own system. So you're going to be at the beginning of the advertising process for a school year. It's to your advantage. We can go through a timeline here in which we already, by, once we signed a contract, we put the name up on our site. We have inquiries, we have a couple of applications, but we think we can get everything done with a successful candidate pool and suggest that we have a cutoff date of January 27th. If we have a cutoff date of January 27th, it's going to give us two months to nationally advertise, and we have an advertisement packet that we would suggest to you in order to cover this across the country. If we do this and take all applications by the 27th, we can begin giving candidates that we would recommend after we have vetted them to use early February. You could get the job done in February, and you could announce who it is that you'd like to select as a superintendent in early March. At that point, just because it's an announcement, there's still going to be a transition, and so the date of a July 1 coming into the district is very reasonable. So we need you to consider whether you think the timeline we have is reasonable and ask any questions that you might have. Now, still part of the community engagement process that you want to have, you want to be able to have any members of your community have access to give input, and so we suggest a three-day schedule. We think that probably the earliest would be maybe the first week, November 30th week, and at that point... Okay, Wayne? We've been through this a few times. At that point, when identifying the community engagement schedule, we're going to need to work particularly with your communication staff who know how to best reach everybody throughout your community. They know also what languages we should make sure that we have the opportunity for people to participate. They know the stakeholders, but so do you. So we need to organize who we would be meeting those days, and we need to have that opportunity where we will have, in this case, we're going to have to talk about not only maybe having face-to-face individual meetings, but concurrently having online opportunities for anyone that would be more suited, that they can deal with us through giving us input on Zoom. So I think we need to do a hybrid process so that we can have that. When we have community forums in the evening, while we want anyone that can participate to be there, we probably also need to make sure we could also engage your larger community. So we're doing it a little differently. I just did a search in Orangeburg where we did the whole communication thing on Zoom. It worked, but we still like to have the opportunity to see people if they want to come out, in a certainly appropriate way, whatever the guidelines your system is using. So I think we're all learning for this as we go. And from that, we'll create a leadership profile that we'll recommend, and you'll see, we ask three questions when we do community engagement. What are the strengths of your school system? What are the challenges that you're facing? And what are the qualities and characteristics that you would like to see in the next superintendent? That's all we discuss. We're not going to get into start times, we're not going to get into this issue or that issue. We're here to do a superintendent search, and that's what we will use the time for. Any of those other issues can be addressed maybe in another way, or we suggest they talk to the board members. Now, in this process, we will interview each board member. We'll look for representative groups, we'll have open forums. There will be an online survey. Now, the online survey takes about 10 minutes. You should get it from your website. The last part of the survey, because it's not a write-in survey, we're asking you to list what you think are some of the strongest things. If they want to write me an email, they can write the email to BWP, and if they want to add some things, I'll be happy to review it. But that email is property of BWP. That actually protects people because if someone says something maybe they shouldn't say or says something disparaging, then it doesn't become a public record, and we want to keep that out. We want to take the high road in all this. So let me give you an example. In a community engagement process, we'll end up having probably 50 meetings over a period of three days. We'll probably meet, if we're going to use Arlington or Chesterfield or any of those examples, 200 to 300 people, people, 200 to 300 people. The online survey, probably 1,500 to 2,500 people will participate. That's a lot of information, and what you're going to find, you're going to find patterns. The other thing we like, we like to have students fill it out, and then we'd like to disaggregate what kids are saying as opposed to what adults are saying. You might find that interesting, but also I think it's important to have them engaged. So again, we know this process works, and when we give this report, again, public record, what we do, we don't summarize what we hear. We write verbatim what we hear. So everything we have isn't edited. We are selective in the sense of trying to, if something's only brought up once, that's not the same if something's brought up several, several times. So we will try to create that pattern. So when we go through that process, we'll get that information that will lead to the profile, and then we're going to be on our way to having candidates to see what you're looking for, and we'll be getting recruitment. Now, again, let's understand, not everybody that's a superintendent, they're going to have the skill sets for this school system. Working in a system this size is a whole different... Working in a system this size is a whole different set of skills in delegation and how you use your central office staff than if you're a system with 4,000 kids and you're a great superintendent, you could be superintendent of the year. So some of the candidates normally will self-select, but you're going to want someone that's going to have the credibility to you and your community and are going to have a track record. You want a track record of someone that's showing a difference in closing achievement gaps, improved graduation rates, the ability to understand navigating COVID. All these things will end up coming out and we part of how we vet our candidates. We will do national publications. Wayne has a connection with the Harvard Urban Superintendent Group that has a lot of names that will get out there. We have, we go to conferences, we've been part of the urban superintendents. We like to work now a lot more with the Latino groups. So because we've been doing some national searches, whether it's Madison, Wisconsin, Columbus, DeKalb, we know where the outreaches are. And we hope that we're not going to, you know, leave anybody out. But also, people look at our website and they keep an eye on it if they're interested in the next step in their career. And you have to face this, facts, folks. Your school system is a destination. It's a place that someone would want at the top of their career. Because of its size, but also the reputation, but also because of its diversity. And it brings a lot of that together. And it's sometimes not dealing with some of the funding issues that you're going to have in some of your urban school systems that have many more financial challenges that you might have. It's not like you're rolling in money, but you aren't dealing with a lot of the other challenges as they're trying to meet some of the budgets. And that's a positive. It enables you to do the work. It enables you to have staff that are attracted to come because you're going to have competitive salaries and are not going to be a farm system just to go to somewhere else. So the fact that you can remain competitive in the Northern Virginia area against the Loudons, the Fairfax, the Arlington, that makes it attractive for people. The fact that you're in a metropolitan area, a technology-rich area, it just makes this very important. So through this and our personal contacts, we're going to do fine with recruitment. We don't have a stable of people. We do each search fresh. And in doing that, we will go through and you have an advertising plan. It's there. Normally, if it's a smaller system, we advertise 30 days. We suggest advertising 60 days. We have a budget that's $2,700, which is very reasonable. The reason it's low is because we don't believe in just doing the newspaper. We believe in doing all the advertising electronically. That's where everybody looks now. So if you're going to do Ed Week and you're going to do one week, it's going to cost you $1,200. We can do 30 days for $600. So the budget we have, it seems to be working for us now. And again, we have other areas besides what we're talking about, our website. We also use the School Board Association, the Virginia Superintendent Association. But remember, if you look at the 135 school systems in Virginia, how many are over 50,000? You're dealing with a handful. So this isn't just a school system that you're going to look for just Virginia. You're looking across the country. The other thing that you're looking for, you're not necessarily always looking for a superintendent. You can have a deputy superintendent or an area superintendent that has several thousand students. So some of these people also have excellent experiences. But their also experiences in large systems. So it isn't that it just has to be a superintendent. So there's our advertising budget. We recommend the 60 days. We need the board to say that once we have the announcement, can we go forward? Is that reasonable to you? You have the example in your booklet that you can look at. When we close tonight, we're going to ask you to review that and see if you can give us your blessing. Now, we already have shared, we are not going to have a trouble attracting excellent candidates. What we need is candidates that have the skills to be the fit and the match. Someone that applies that's a director, not on a superintendent cabinet. They could be great, but they aren't going to have the skills and experience. So we have all this information up there. Your HR department, your communications department, any outreach you already do, we'll use whatever's already here. We don't have to reinvent anything. When you did the research for proposal, you gave an overview of your system. It talked about all those strengths. We'll end up with their help crafting a draft that'll come before you and you'll see if it is representative. But the idea of a diverse, dynamic, and professional community, all that's important. The other thing, and I'm going to say this, candidates are also looking at you. They're looking at board meetings. They're looking on how you conduct business. They want to know, how does the board work with the superintendent? So all this, in some cases, there's controversy in board meetings. There's not civility in board meetings. There's not the situation in Richmond where a board member threw a shoe at another board member. There's things that sometimes cause the atmosphere not to be a place where maybe someone might want to work. Now, that was years ago. The truth is, during this whole process, it's a two-way street. People are going to want to come in, view the community. They're going to look at anything that they've seen in any publications. All this is part of doing their homework. I don't see, in my opinion, that there's anything out there that doesn't happen in most school systems that seems to be a detriment because your school system moving forward. And your track record and the data you have is positive. And so I believe, again, you will attract an excellent pool. Now, I cannot predict how many candidates are going to apply. You know, we have an excellent number in Arlington. We've had an excellent number in DeKalb. We're talking 50, 60 candidates. But not all of them even were a strong match. Only thing we want is one great one. But what we'd like to do is to give you, four to six are going to give you a hard job of trying to figure out which ones, after you meet with them, do you think are the best fit for you? That's going to be your decision. I also am making the commitment to each board member, we will share 100% of the candidates that apply with you. So you'll see the ones that we didn't recommend. But since this is part of this process, that is something we would do. Now, their names are going to be confidential. But we don't want, we want all board members to have equal access to all of the information. And you need to know that that's something that you should value and it's something we value in working with you. When we get into assessment and we look at, everybody has to go online with their applications. We vet people, we do informal interviews. We do, we have a lady who works for BWP that knows about any way possible to find Google information. The problem is with social media, some of these things are just beyond our reach. But if anyone that's working in a school system, their community knows them. So you will find things out. And if there's something out there that's controversial, there's also two sides to a story. So some of that information, you're counting on us to really make sure that there's no surprises. You don't want to hire someone and then all of a sudden, someone come up with something that you didn't even know about that maybe causes you to be embarrassed about whatever decision you make. That's why our reputation is such that we haven't had those situations. But it doesn't mean we don't have to work hard at it. So we're trying to find the information that's going to create the best fit and match. And once we have the assessment, we're going to get to the point where we go beyond reference. We go between the lines. And this is where the experience Wayne and I have and also the colleagues that we have across the country, we will find that information for you. But in the very end, when you're considering the people you want to hire and you're down to the point who that person is, your board chair should call that board chair or even have a couple of board members so that you have firsthand information so you aren't just hearing it just from us. And we'll explain how that might work. So when you get into selection, we're going to recommend usually four to six candidates. You're going to select, now remember, we only recommend. You have to decide if you want to interview. So we're not the decision maker on that. And if you see anyone in the pool that we didn't recommend and you want more information, we'll provide it. We will give you protocols for interviews. We'll give you sample interview questions. We'll tell you the difference between what you might want to ask in a first interview, what you might want to ask in a second interview.
Kevin, let me interject. When we come to the board, it's in closed session with the four to six top candidates based on match and fit to the profile. We will give to the board a one-page document that describes all of the qualities, characteristics of why we believe, based on our review, that these are the top four to six candidates. We will present each candidate to you. We are not promoting a particular candidate. We will have, as Kevin said, done a deep vetting. So what does that look like? We begin by reviewing the application to see whether their experiences start to match and fit. At that point, we probably eliminate a significant number. Then Kevin will call a candidate and have what we call an informal interview. When he's finished, the group that he calls, he calls me and says, Wayne, I finished. And then I pick up the phone and call, it's a second discussion. And then we talk and usually a few drop out because they did not match and fit the profile. And by then, the number's probably down to 10. And then we start to contact people we know who know them and know their work. Usually not individuals they have included on as references. We don't call the references at that point. We know what they're going to tell us. And then we get together again. We have a set of about 20 questions that we will go through with them. And that's how we get down to this four to six. Again, always using the profile to determine, are they a match and fit for what Prince William County needs? And how can they, can they address the challenges that you've said? Do they bring the qualities and characteristics? That's how we get to this closed meeting. And we give you that one-page document that explains all of the reasons they are in the top four to six. At that point, you are then are where you need to be to decide, do we interview these four or to six candidates? Or you may say, but there are two more people you talked to us about. We'd like more information about them. But remember, it's your job to decide who are the top candidates and then ultimately, who will be your final two or three candidates? And then who will be your selection?
Thank you, Wayne. Successful steps for a search. Board unity. We don't recommend people accept a position for a superintendent on a split vote. It's not a good sign. We would hope that you would take the time, that you might be able to have an agreement. Because the message it was sent, someone to bring their family if they're on a five-three vote, I don't know if we'd recommend that they would take the job. That's not our decision to make. But it is important that you understand the message it sends to your community. Transparency in the sense that on the front end of the process, your community should have every opportunity to give input to you. And even throughout the process, the people you know should be able to talk to you all the way to the end before you do the interviews. We would encourage that. That's the way it should be. And we're not talking necessarily about people. We're talking about the qualities and characteristics you want to see. We talked about confidentiality. We have seen confidentiality breached in rare occasions and has totally messed up a process. It infects the integrity of the board. It actually has affected at least one or two candidates, the relationship that ended up impacting their jobs. We don't want that to happen. The whole idea of trying to do the match and fit, it's a matter of having this driven by you, who are the experts in the elected offices for your community. So all this, I'm going to tell you, in a super, super majority of the time, this all works just fine. It doesn't make it easy, it's intense. Board members have to free their schedules in order to make sure when we go through the interview process. The other thing we're going to be asking board members on the announcement and also on the community engagement and also the online survey, when staff gives you a draft, we need a quick turnaround. We want it to be consensus. You don't have to vote. But staff has got a lot of extra work. If you have to take the online survey and then you have to translate it into eight languages, we don't want to create the timeline that's not reasonable for your staff, also in the organization. So we need your help on this. We don't want to leave anything out. But it gets a little intense for the next few weeks. So we need you to work together as a team, work with staff. There's no question, you have very capable staff. They're going to assist us all the way through the process. We've already had the opportunity to meet for some time before this meeting. And so all that is going to happen. But I need to tell you that we have to be sensitive to that. What we're recommending is, we think, the window of the week of November 30th, maybe December 1, 2, and 3 would probably be ideal if you can make that work. We think there's enough upfront time. We think it also gives us time to provide a report to you if you wish before the holidays. And we can talk about that later. So at this point, when we're talking about the specification stage, I would like to get the specification stage done by December, which means we'd have our report back to you. All the candidates would know what it is you're looking for and then they would suit their applications that could be due on the 27th of January, what we're recommending. Now, recruitment started last week of October. It'll go all the way until the end of January and then we'll give the candidates to you. Then your selection process in which you talk about your interviews, you'll need to consider setting up some windows. And the thing is going to be, and here's what's going to be hard. You're also going to be doing a budget process. And God knows how many meetings you have with budget and all that time. It's not an ideal timeline. Sometimes boards do have meetings on Saturdays. I'm just going to tell you, it's intense. And I don't know any other way around it, but you don't want to not do what you have to do. So it's going to require some planning. I mean, you know how hard it is with all the work you board members have. But we do have to at least foreshadow that that has to be. So as we, Wayne, if you'll come up here with me now, I'd like to hopefully leave this open for questions that you might have. And then I want to then make sure before we leave that we're clear on what we're going to need to move forward from you very quickly.
Lucky, if you want to put up the screen so I can see the members at home or Jason? If we can just, oh, great, wonderful. Okay, fantastic. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll start, how about if I start with questions from home? Does anybody, if you want to just raise your hand, if anybody has any questions there about the presentation or the process? Ms. Jackson?
Thank you for the presentation and outlining everything. I just have one quick question.
I just have one quick question. When you're selecting the educators group or the other subgroups, how is that determined as part of the interview process or asking process?
It's a combination. Normally, we would ask the communication department to talk about all the stakeholders. We also hope they would do outreach to non-system employees, groups like the NAACP, the county commissioners. But ultimately, in the end, board members should see the list. And since you know your community, you need to be able to have input for any stakeholder group that you want to see included. So there's a balance between staff that's going to use some of their good judgment on things that they normally do in this process, and then it's a combination of also getting board input. So if we do that check and balance, so to speak, then we'll find a way to make it work.
Thank you.
Ms. Ralston? Go ahead, now unmute Diane.
I'm sorry. I enjoyed listening and watching, but I'm concerned that we are really a very, to me, different kind of school system. And the length of time that you guys have to spend on trying to get our process through, does this, do you, do you slow down what you're doing? Or how do you make all of that work within the length of time that you've spoken about? Thank you.
I think the timeline that we have laid out, it's draft. And we believe that timeline is similar to other timelines that we've used when we've done searches. And we believe that that timeline is reasonable, and that we can accomplish this task and bring candidates to the board in time for the board to do the interviews, make the final decisions, work the contract, and have someone in place by July 1. We think that we have adequate time to get that done and to do it well.
I'd also like to add, Ms. Ralston, we're not engaging in any other searches at this time. So we're able to devote our time.
Thank you.
Ms. Jesse?
Hi. First of all, I want to welcome Mr. Harris back to Prince William County. He said that he met, he came to Prince William. I came to Fairfax years ago, and I met you also, and Dr. Herman Harris. So, so not Herman Harris, but I've forgotten his last name, but the two of you are African Americans, and Prince William Howard, yes. So thank you for coming. I read all your material, and I want to thank you for providing us with a comprehensive package. The slides tonight I looked at, and I want to ask a couple of questions. You said in your package that you get 100 requests, and you only select certain school system. I guess I want to ask you, why did you select Prince William County?
We chose to respond to the request for proposal because we believe that our experience will allow us to bring forward top candidates from which you, your board will choose your next superintendent. We think that we bring experience, both as members of the search firm, but maybe more importantly, we together have about 25 years of experience in the superintendency. We have another 20 years in a high-level executive experience. Kevin and I both have worked with boards on board governance. We have done strategic planning. I am on faculty at Virginia Tech, helping the next generation of superintendents prepare. Together, our experience lets us know that we can do an outstanding job assisting this board, and we found it attractive and an honor that you would select us to assist you.
Thank you. I read in some of your material that it's important that you understand, that superintendent understands the connection between the building relationship and empathetic communication. What does that look like when you're doing an interview? This whole idea of communication between the board, communication with the schools, and this empathy piece that you talked about?
If I could respond in one word, it is leadership. If we want, we will see hundreds of definitions of leadership, but if we boil it down, the individual who can communicate, and I'm talking about emphatic communication, meaning being able to listen as well as respond, but to build relationships with all constituencies, starting with the school board. The most important relationship is to develop that relationship with the board, as well as with staff, and then community. So we will be looking for candidates who have demonstrated the ability to lead, and we're looking for building relationships and communications as the foundation for the other leadership attributes that they bring.
You mentioned COVID, the relationship, and you said things would be different for you because it's COVID situation. And when I look at staff, I think that the communication, not just with staff, but the people in the field, the teachers are going to be, that's going to be something that we are really going to have to look at also. I also noticed that you have minority candidates, and that you're connected with various NAPSE, and that you've worked with that. And you listed several superintendents that are minority superintendents. And I don't want to be very specific, but in some instances, those school systems, the performance is not at this level for Prince William County. So I'm assuming that when you're looking, you're going to establish parameters or metrics that align with where we are, that you're going to do some type of needs assessment to see where we are, and to make sure that that candidate aligns with our performance parameters.
We began by collecting information from anyone who wants to talk with us over three days. We take that information because that includes what you have said to us, this community has said to us, of the qualities, characteristics, experiences that the candidate possesses and can demonstrate. So that's the experiences they would have had. We use that in what we have referred to as the leadership profile, and we use that profile as we are vetting candidates, as we are determining, does this individual bring what is necessary based on what we know? Are they a good fit and match? And if they are, they will find themselves in that four to six category that we present to you, the board.
I'd like, can I just finish? Because I think you asked an excellent question. We're dealing, when we're talking about some of the other school systems that are more inner-city, that do not have the success that you've had in some of your student data, your graduation rates. And the reason boards are hiring people is they're trying to make them better. But one of the things that we should be able to tell you about any candidate that we present, what evidence do they have that have shown them with trend data of making improvements in reducing achievement gaps, graduation rates? And so even though they might be in a district that maybe isn't quite as strong as yours, are they moving in the right direction? And where is their leadership? You need to have that. And if they can't demonstrate that, then it's not going to give you or your community that confidence. So what you're asking for is someone that is going to, when they present themselves, create some sort of their body of work that shows trend data, that's going to show you that they are capable of moving the needle on some of the places that you're going to have. Now, your needle might be a little bit higher, and that's great. And I've mentioned that before. But still, you've got to see other people that are doing it from wherever they're coming from. That's a good question.
Thank you. The other item, I have two questions, and I'm going to give other members of the board an opportunity. I noticed that one of the, in the handout we received today, that the community engagement, and I noticed that you included the faith community. Do you recommend that we include the faith community, or is that the decision of the board? Do you have a separate?
What we are suggesting to the board is that you will make decisions to include any and everyone in this community who wants to share. So that would include the faith community. We're not singling the faith community out. We're saying, everyone who wants to give input, and we encourage everyone to do that, should have that opportunity. And then staff will make a determination of how those meetings are organized, and then we will be meeting with them.
Okay. Finally, in the original packet that I read through, you talked about research-based practices. What are you looking for as a firm, for your group? What do you look at when you determine research-based practices? What are some of the elements of that?
You know, there's so many things right now that COVID has brought out on how we're using technology. And I tell you the issue that I'm concerned with. We have a lot of kids that are getting left behind because we don't know if their homes are getting the same support as we're going through some of this distance learning. So somewhere, we hope people are going to be able to talk about their track record of how they're addressing these type of things. You know, we could talk about blended learning. We could talk about the idea of doing graduate portfolios, or the whole idea of the portrait of a graduate. A lot of these things, as you go across the country, are more similar in high-performing school systems like yours. So we think it's up to the candidate to talk about some of the things. I also think that you can't have the elephant in the room, that the whole issue of social justice, how social justice is being addressed in the districts, how it's going to impact what someone's going to bring to the table, all these issues have sometimes taken a different meaning and a different depth. You're going to want to see that. So it might not also fit into this research practice or that research practice, but it's more about the body of work that's going on in our school systems, particularly larger school systems across the country. And you also have a good track record, because it isn't that you aren't addressing a lot of these issues already in your system.
Well, the final part of that is that we are a good system. But I also would like to know whether or not you're going to look at disaggregate that data and look at, we do have an achievement gap, and we do still have an access to some of the higher-performing programs, and there's a gap there. So you will disaggregate that data and not assume that everything is great in Prince William County. And I have a feeling that you will, but I'm just bringing it up.
Let me clarify. We won't be disaggregating the data. We will be looking for candidates who have demonstrated the ability to look at what the data tells them, and have experience using their analysis of the data to be able to address whatever the issues are. So we'll be looking for candidates, as we are vetting them, to determine, have they been able to do that, where they currently are in their positions, and what do they say to us as we're talking to them about recognizing that there are some challenges here in Prince William County, and that they are prepared to then address those challenges.
Thank you very much. I take my time as, thank you.
We'll start, Ms. Argarpur.
Thank you. Can we go back for, oh, thank you for this presentation this evening. Can we go back for just a moment? Because one of the more important pieces that we talked about originally was engaging employees and communities in the community in discussion. You talked about a three-day period. And I'm sure you're aware of how many varied communities we have here, and you've talked about how we'll have to sort of identify who and what. How are the three, what do you envision for the three days and how they'll look like? And I know we have online surveys, but what do those three days look like?
On the right-hand side, you'll see an example of what two days look like in Arlington. You would see, we had meetings all through the day, every 45 minutes. It's a long day. And now we think, because of the largeness of your system, that we need a third day. We need to have an opportunity, perhaps have forums in your magisterial districts that each of you are part of. When we did DeKalb, 105,000 students, we actually did it in two days, but we had three people. So if we have to make a combination of some of our meetings, we should be able to get it done. And our experience would suggest that every other community has had the opportunity to talk about their stakeholders, and you'll have the same, but it pretty much will fit into the pattern that we have. We're not going to, well, I'll tell you what. If it gets to a point where we need to come to an extra day, we will ask you, would you consider, we need to have an extension of whatever we get paid for another day, because you have more than we've ever had before? So we should be able to leave that option open if that occurs. The whole idea that you, as a board, you don't want to have a situation where someone might feel that they were excluded. What we are asking them is to do it within the window. And then at the same time, if they don't have the opportunity to do it within the window, they still can write you a letter, or write us a letter, so that they can give their input.
Thank you. And then the other thing, kind of attached to that, you talked about the division would be able to disperse a survey? And when do you think that we'll be doing that piece?
First off, you need to decide when you're going to do your three-days community engagement. I would suggest perhaps the surveys go online, maybe before Thanksgiving, and keep them open till, if we do December 1, 2, and 3, leave the surveys open till maybe December 6 or so. Communicate it. It's going to be online, and I suspect we're not going to have any problem getting 1,500 people or more. But the other thing is, we want to make sure we get to students, too. And so maybe we can use your board representative and figure out ways to do that.
We also have a student senate, too, so.
Well, we hope that would be a way to do that.
So that's a great point. The student senate can meet, that's one constituency along with, okay. I'll go to Lori next, Ms. Williams.
I was going to say the same thing, because we do have a student senate that stood up that's representative of all of our schools. So I think it would be to our advantage that they, the student senate, at the very least, our three student board members were also included in that interview process, and were treated in the same manner as you treat us as voting board members. They have done an exceedingly good job over the past several years of communicating with the student body, and the student body is familiar with them. The student senate is a little bit newer. But again, that is a very broad representation of our student body, because they have representatives from each school at this point. I am concerned about the three-day period, because historically, we are not a very responsive community, and it generally takes a long time for us to get even our surveys back. And because of the diversity in our community, if it is going to be such a short timeframe, I think as a board, it is best for us to decide that sooner rather than later, because we need the amount, we need a significant amount of time to advertise, to make sure that people do respond. I'm also concerned, because we have transportation issues in this community, we have online access, internet access issues. So I think that those are things to be considered as well. Part of our community does not have regular internet access. And then if it was to be face-to-face, we do have transportation issues in this community as well, in certain areas. So those are things to think about when planning those three days.
Madam Vice Chair, mask qualification. Are you saying you think December 1, 2, and 3 would be too soon to do?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, us as a general, since we're talking about it, that as a board.
Well, you know, one thing that maybe could counter the transportation issue, if we have the availability to also enable all of our meetings to also have parallel Zoom opportunities, then maybe we can make an access that maybe the transportation, maybe we could mitigate that, because normally, we wouldn't have that. And then that might be an issue in another place, and you've got 390 square miles, and we just did a system that was 700, and transportation definitely was an issue. So maybe by, maybe the new way that people So maybe by, maybe the new way that people are behaving, by doing the Zoom and everything, maybe we actually are going to come up with a better model than we've had in the past.
No, I think, I think our hybrid meetings have been working really well for us, and as far as gathering input from our community, and I appreciate that. I, I'm, how do you, as a firm, when you take comments and suggestions and survey responses from the public, one of the things that struck me when you said, you know, people have the ability to email you, one of the things that happens very, very frequently, and of course, I don't know from any other school district, because I'm not in it, in our district, is we get form letters and chain letters that come to us as board members petitioning on whatever the topic is. So this would be the superintendent's search. So a particular group drafts a letter, and then is sent to all of their constituents, and it sort of drowns out other voices. And I'm very concerned about how, as a firm, you would deal with those types of issues.
I'll, I'll have to deal with it. I mean, the point is, it just means I got to run off more paper. But, but the fact that it's coming to BWP and it's our property, I'll still be able to do that. I, I haven't had that happen, but I am aware how that does happen. But the one thing I don't want to do is to not have that available for people if they choose.
Correct.
But you're, you're right, and a lot of this is just going to be using our own good judgment.
Okay. I appreciate that, because it happens very frequently here. And then I'm curious to know if it is possible during the superintendent's search, or what your recommendations would be. Our public, in general, is, is sort of a, we have a larger group of individuals that live in this community with extensive education underneath their belt, and, but what doesn't always happen is, people understand the nuances of what it is a board is doing at that particular time. So I'm curious to know, do you recommend publishing sort of the do's and don'ts along the HR line of, train of thought for what our community should and shouldn't know? For example, we talked a little bit about the confidentiality of not releasing the names, but also other things, like why, why, maybe there's like a 10-point bullet point list or something, to sort of help the community digest maybe why this particular set of information is not being public versus this set of information is. I, I'm often trying to help our community understand what our board is doing, and being very transparent, but we miss sometimes those little details and things. And I'm wondering if that's something that you recommend, or you think that that is something not quite needed?
One of the things I think that you will find of value, when we present the community engagement report, and we show the qualitative data from all the surveys and the patterns, and then also we'll show the qualitative data of the things that we heard, that's a public document, and it might generate some discussion. And at that time, people might want to weigh in at a board meeting. They might want to talk to a certain board member. There are reasons why we are making a recommendation for confidential search on the backend, on the frontend, totally, we want to involve everybody. And in the end, you might have people that don't agree with that. But that's your role as a board, to make those type of decisions. And our job is to make recommendations. We're not trying to tell you what to do. But we, we think these will be defensible. Also, if we do get in front of people during the community engagement process, they're going to ask us some of these questions, too. And we hope we'll be able to respond. You know, when we have these meetings, you know, board members are welcome to attend. There's no problem. We don't encourage or discourage it in one way or another. But we, we think by being open, that we will find that this process, maybe we'll address what you're talking about.
Thank you. And I think I have two more questions, then I'll wrap up. My next question is, how do you deal with the technology piece of it when you're vetting candidates? I think that technology is really key, and what is your firm's knowledge or really, I guess your knowledge of today's technology and how it uses a communication tool, and how integral that is for progression as a school system?
Let me say that we have an individual who will Google, do social media. I know that's not your question, but I think it's important to understand that we're going to use technology to check out folks in various ways. In terms of the candidate's knowledge and use and experience with technology, that's going to come out as we're looking at their application, and also as we are talking with them, interviewing them, because where you stand, we have to know if candidates have the experiences and the leadership ability to further the use of technology as a teaching and learning tool.
Thank you. And my last question.
I'd like to maybe look at that a little differently. I don't think it's the issue that a superintendent knows all the nuances that your technology department does. But because this is such a large system, the superintendent has to show some ability that that system is on the upper end of how technology is getting implemented to create the access that you're trying to have in a community. Because it's the type of thing that would probably be a team effort. You know, superintendent, what you're looking is a leader that has that ability to take advantage of the expertise and hire the expertise in all those departments. I might not be on the top of the list of what I might know is in technology, but I have to be knowledgeable enough to have staff that's not going to put my school system in a disadvantage in any way.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And my last question is, with your combined experience and everything you know as a search firm, and doing this for several numbers of years, several years, how do you deal with your own personal biases and maintain neutrality as we go through this process?
I come at this, that this is my number-one task. With, with integrity, use that profile after listening to people to determine who's fit and match. That's the measuring stick. That's the, those are the parameters we use. And as people are applying, apply the guidelines in that profile. What we found in the past is that, that's the best we can do for any biases we may have. To, as long as we stick to that as our guide, I think we do a pretty good job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's a very high point of attention in today's world, so I appreciate that answer, and you taking time to answer it, as well as all the other questions that I had. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
All right. Thank you for your presentation tonight. It was really thorough, and I feel really confident in what you've laid out for us. So I just wanted to say thank you, you know, for that. I only have a couple of questions. One is just regarding the student and teacher piece for input. I know we'll, you had talked about the survey that would go out, right? So teachers would get a survey, staff would get a survey, perhaps, you know, all the different kinds of staff would get surveys, and students as well. But is that, will there be an opportunity for like a Q and A, not a Q and A, but like a, an actual time where students could come and actually speak, not in a survey format, but actually give their input in person, I guess, or virtually?
Yeah, let me tell you, normally what we do is we wait till after the school day, and we'll run a employee forum, which anyone can attend. Now, question, we don't know even if they're in the school or not, but still, we would want to pick the end of the day, when people are not part of their responsibilities, whether it's guiding online learning or in the, in the classrooms, and have the opportunity for people to attend, but also have the opportunity to do it virtually. And so this is a job where we need to have, through the communication department, or how you reach everybody, that they're going to have access to those times. And because you have such a larger system, we might even do that each afternoon. We'll have to wait and see how that works, but we want to make sure that, you know, we don't get bombarded with just too many people on the Zoom at one time. And somewhere, at least, and I'm, just because I'm rolling with this as we're figuring out how this is going to work, we're going to rely on their good judgment on how we might be able to effectively address what you just said.
Okay. Great. Thanks. And my second question just has to do with the confidentiality piece, and I, and you've spoken tonight about how important that is, and how you recommend that we have a confidential process so that we can attract the best candidates, so that they don't jeopardize their success in their existing district, if they don't end up being our final candidate. And I do really feel like that's really important, because we do want to attract the best candidates that we can. Can you give us a little more advice as board members of what kinds of things we need to watch out for, so that we don't breach that confidentiality? Because I don't want this process to be jeopardized by somebody, you know, being careless, or maybe inadvertently being careless about information. I'm assuming that we don't give out names, we don't say anything like where they're coming from, we don't say, oh, well, we're looking at this person, you know, they're like in this giant district in, I don't know, Minnesota, you know, or something like that, because that could easily be traced, right? Little clues like that, if somebody wanted to do due diligence, they could find out who that candidate was that we were talking about. And I'm, I know I'm probably missing things.
You've heard, you've heard the expression, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. My mother would say, what happens in the Harris household stays in the Harris household. During this process, as you are getting information about candidates, it's your information among you and members of the board only. The name should not be shared with your best friend. The only way a secret is kept is you don't tell anyone. This isn't a secret, it's a confidential search. We're saying that the information we give you about candidates stays among the board and us until such time as you have decided who your top candidate is. Because if you would choose on your own, as an example, that you want to pick up the phone and call one of the candidates? We've lost two candidates that way, where board members went outside of what you agreed to. And so you jeopardize the quality of the pool and top candidates, because they will ask us, is this a confidential search? Some will say, I won't even apply if it's not confidential. So that, that's in essence what we're asking of you, what we're recommending.
Okay, great. So no.
A year ago.
No sharing with spouses or family?
None.
Nothing of that sort.
Although, there was a time when we would present the candidates, and we took all the information, and you turned it back in, and we put it under lock and key, because we didn't want it to go home and inadvertently someone seeing it. We probably have gone past that, and actually it gives a greater trust to board members that we're going to enable each board member to have an electronic file, as opposed to just hard copy, and have their own password. And if they do that, then they aren't subjugated to have to come into the clerk's office, and they're going to have access, and it's a trust issue. But it also is an issue of efficiency because of the board time, because some people might want to look at it at night, some early in the morning. And so we have changed that, but you still are the only one that's going to have the password to that information. Now, even though then, it goes home in a sense, but it's a matter of you respecting, you know, the process here and what we've shared.
I, I don't want to put this board on the spot, but we have not had, except for the two exceptions that I gave you, where a board member went outside of the guidelines. Ninety-eight percent of the boards, when they've said it's a confidential search, those board members were committed to that. It did not leak. The names were not publicized. And I'm speaking of in places where that information isn't part of the public, what they call the sunshine laws. So we trust that if you decide that, and that's what we recommend, we trust that that's what you'll do.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your answers. I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you both for coming tonight. Truly appreciate it, and your time and expertise in this process. Just a couple of questions, and just because I thought I caught some things. In regards to a nationally competitive package in salary, are you going to make recommendations to us with that? Because I know you mentioned something about us doing research on that. Will you guys be looking at similar district sizes and starting salaries for superintendents of that and presenting a recommendation, or is that on us to come up with that?
One way of looking at this, and you need to understand, anybody that applies this is going to know exactly how much your superintendent makes.
Yes.
Public record.
Yeah.
And they're going to choose to benchmark that. And then they're also going to know that your superintendent had longevity. They're going to know the salary of Fairfax superintendent. They're going to know the salary of systems in Texas. Anywhere across the country, that's there. So whatever you're talking about, we would perhaps maybe work with staff for assistance on that, but, but those numbers are readily available. I do think this should be data-driven, because you do have a responsibility to the taxpayers, that you're within the range of comparable candidates. Again, you're talking about the 35th largest school system of 18,000 school systems, so you want to be in a comparable range of that that's defensible. Part of the package, though, isn't just salary, and it isn't just annuity, it's also benefits. So a lot of this, first off, I, I need to explain this. We work for you. We're not negotiating their contracts. That's not our job. We're not there to tell them what they want or don't want. That's just not our role in that. But we'll find a way to make sure that you have the available information. And again, that's not a problem. You ask us, and we'll work. We can work with Mary on that. She has access to that. And each board, that's kind of what we do in the process when we have some of our discussions.
Thank you. That would be helpful. In your experience working with districts, we're talking about the sunshine law, and you mentioned Florida. I think funny thing about Florida is they have elections, too, for a lot of their superintendents, which I think is quite interesting. But looking at this, in your experience working in Virginia, and working with school districts in Virginia, had any of them chosen to make the final three candidates public, or they've all gone with the confidential, with your recommendation?
I would like to say that they have listened to our recommendation.
Okay. Community engagements about these different panels and such, it might have already been asked, but I don't know if it was explicitly asked, do board members have the ability to make recommendations to you on participants in those groups?
First off, the board members have to, have to sign off on the community engagement stakeholders. We do not decide who those are going to be. That's, that's a system-driven thing. And again, you're, you're the experts, but you also have a substantial communication department that does these type of things, whether it's through redistricting or any number of things that you do. So I think the, the check and balances of that is a team effort. We just want to make sure that we can get it right.
For those events, are you guys conducting them, or are you guys, I know some superintendent search firms contract, no?
On the ground, we'll be here.
Okay. That's good. Okay. Because I know some places contract third parties to conduct those for them and stuff like that. That's good. Regards to the survey, is that another thing you two design and provide, or who designs the survey?
On the right-hand side, on the right-hand side of your packet, there is a sample survey. I would have to say that that survey, based upon experience over the years, is pretty representative. However, you can customize that survey if you have certain things that you might like to see, in maybe a category or two, and that's up to the staff, working with the board, to get final copy. The thing is, I'm just suggesting on the timeline on that one, like our lady, Maryanne will get to the communications department with, maybe they could use the boilerplate of the DeKalb survey, put it in a Word document, and then have them decide and also work with the board if they think that there's any other nuances that you might like to see. So it not meant to be a rubber stamp. We have the flexibility, but I also think that you're going to find, because we've known it's worked in the past, it's got a pretty good track record.
Please keep in mind that the survey gives us quantitative data around those same three questions. What are the strengths in Prince William County public schools? What are the challenges in, that the next superintendent will face? And what are the qualities, experiences, and characteristics that the superintendent, next superintendent must possess and demonstrate? So it's the same. So it's the same three questions, worded slightly different, to give us quantitative data. The meetings give us qualitative data, which brings meaning to what the numbers tell us.
Thank you, and that leads to my final question. And just so I can get it, again, I thought I heard you both say this. Do you encourage board members to solicit information from their constituencies regarding those three questions leading up to the search process?
We think that should be an open-ended, that should be an open-ended discussion at any time.
Okay, thank you.
No, we encourage the exchange. You know these people, you want to have these conversations. And so we will encourage that.
Thank you.
So a couple housekeeping things. Dr. Kastner and Dr. Harris have asked the board to approve a number of issues regarding moving forward on the process. Number one is that we do this in a confidential search process, and this is the recommendation of the search firm for a division our size. Do I see any board members opposing this idea? Any opposition to that? Okay, so we'll move forward with the confidential process. Second, the timeline, we'd like to get these dates set up for November 30th, 1, 2, and 3, or December 1, 2, and 3 for getting the process going. Are those dates acceptable? And then we, the board will make, will work with you all on the stakeholder groups. Are those days acceptable to the board? Do I have any opposition to those dates? Well, we're not going to be at that, I mean, some of these are stakeholder groups. But yeah, the one night is a board meeting.
That's the December 2nd.
December 2nd, right.
We will be holding various meetings with different groups. You don't need to be there for that. That will be what we will be doing.
Yeah.
I just wanted to indicate by, I love the idea of having the after-school activities where you allow teachers to come in or staff members, because that way you don't get into a particular organization. In other words, the only way I can participate in this is that I belong to an organization. So I really like that aspect of it.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I think that having it on the same night as having a board meeting could cause conflict for people who want to do both. So I'd like a little bit either more clarification on what occurs that night, or if we could bump it to a following. I just, I'm really, I don't want to double-book people, because our time, you know, some of our community members only have so much time. So I'd really like to be able to give them the opportunity to be either be here or at one of those meetings in case they missed one or the other, since it is only a three-day window.
Okay, let's look at it this way. If we're going to do forums, I talk about in the evening, you've got seven magisterial districts. If, for some reason, you want to do Tuesday, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you don't want to do a forum on Friday. But if you doubled up the forums on Wednesday and Thursday and you kept your Tuesday night, and we don't, we aren't here Tuesday night, so you can have your board meeting, then we could do that. So there is some flexibility here in discussing this. We're okay with that. But I don't recommend doing forums on Friday. So if all of a sudden you do, Wayne takes two magisterial districts, I take two, and then the next night I take two and he takes two, then we got your eight districts. And I don't know how at large works, but somewhere, again, this is the flexibility that we want to talk, what you're going to be comfortable with as a system. So there's a little give and take here. And so if, because you have that board meeting and you want to do that Plan B, we can make that work. That's okay. But that's something that, again, you might want to ask staff then to maybe look at Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, so our board meetings, yeah, our board meetings are typically on Wednesday, that's a Wednesday evening.
It's on a Wednesday.
So the thought would be, could you do a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday? Would that, would that be possible? Or you do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then evening on Thursday? How are you going to do that? Ms. Williams, I mean.
I also have concerns too. I just want to, I'd like to get staff input, specifically because we're already understaffed. Now we're doing COVID, and that is, correct me if I'm wrong, in budget season? So, yeah, I see Mr. Wallingford nodding for here. And I just, I'm already concerned about staff burnout. I'm already concerned about the amount of work that they have to do in prep for a board meeting. It's a board meeting week, and then now we're on budget season and COVID on top of it. So I'm just, I'm very concerned about, like, what do we need staff for? How much time is this going to take away from the things that they do normally in order to set these up? And making sure that they have time and their schedules to assist in this and not burn out and actually perform to the best of their ability as well.
Ms. Williams, I'm going to put my superintendent hat on. This is the most important thing your school system does. Your staff will do what they need to do. It's not going to be easy. But we've given them a lot of examples where they don't have to reinvent this, that they can use. The key that's equally and even more important is we're getting all the stakeholder groups. Now, the question is, Wayne and I, we drive here, and he wants to go home for a day and then come back? No, we can do that. But somewhere you're going to have to now weigh this in. And it's your decision on how you think that board meeting needs to be. Maybe even staff, we could end up taking one of the days and Wayne and I could do it virtually. Don't even need to be here. I don't know. I just think it's something we need to brainstorm. And in the end, we'll try to do whatever we can. I don't think it's a good idea to wait to the following week, in my opinion. Let's just maybe take a couple of days and this don't, we don't have to firm up the days yet. And maybe staff can help you, showing you what it might look like. But if you give them direction and you say, well, you don't want it on the night of the board meeting, then we need to go to Plan B. That's all.
I think I'm okay. I think to make me feel comfortable, if the rest of the board doesn't mind, is if we did choose those dates, if we had backup dates planned as well. I'm just really concerned, not only for what is going on, but the, we're in the middle of COVID. So like, us losing a staff member is a significant dent in this process, because we don't have three or four people doing the same job. So if we are going to stick to those dates, I'd feel very, much more comfortable at the very least if we had some backup dates. It's coming right off of a holiday.
So looking at the sample schedule you guys gave us for your community engagement, on the third night, it was, there's a meeting at 6 o'clock and a meeting at 7 o'clock. It's really a couple hours. Our school board meetings begin around 5 with closed session. And so if in those hours, you guys can find the constituent groups that you don't necessarily need board members at or a lot of staff for, so for example, meeting the student senate or other kinds of groups we can arrange, that board members don't necessarily need to be there.
Make the forum on that night, maybe a little bit later.
Sure, yeah, I think that's something we can look at as we look at flexibility on this. Because, you know, there's going to be some groups that are going to want to meet with you without us around. Right? I assume there's typically groups that like to meet with you without board members around.
Yeah, but first, the forum are optional whether board members attend. However, I understand that board members might want, you don't want to take that option away. I get that, but.
You guys can handle it without staff necessarily for a couple of those meetings on that night.
Well, first off, we don't need staff at night. The only area that we're going to have to figure out, that when we're dealing with translators or whatever we have to do when we're trying to be, give access to some of the languages, then we are going to need staff. But we don't, we take the notes.
We're taking notes.
Staff doesn't do that. The only thing they need to do is to show us the place, and we're there.
Make sure it's open.
That's all we need.
Okay, so with that in mind, I think we stick to the November 30th, December 1 and 2. So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, does that make sense? Or do you guys do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, fine.
First, second, third.
First, second, third, okay, that's fine, the week of, the November 30th.
It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, okay. So I think that's fine, and then if anything comes up, we'll deal with that as it goes. So moving on from that, is any opposition to the advertising plan? Anybody have any concerns about that? Okay. And then community engagement overview, example schedule, example online survey. So the survey dates that they recommended, sort of getting the survey up around Thanksgiving, going into December 7th, is that a good timeline, draft timeline to work with as we prepare the survey? Any opposition to that or concerns regarding that? Okay.
The survey is going to be dependent when we talk with your staff on the translations.
Okay.
And we'll need to deal with that. The other part that, because you've filled in some of this in this announcement, because you've given us a couple of dates, then I'll be in contact with staff tomorrow to talk about a couple of givens, and then they can fill in some of the content. There's going to be some things that are going to be similar. You need to get your individual website, but the state association's the same and some of the other things. So actually, you've kind of got what we need. But I do think we need to talk more about the community engagement as you're going to get some examples.
Ms. Wall.
How long will this survey be open for? I don't know if I missed that.
Listen, there's no right or wrong on this. But I think it'd be nice to have it, let's just say, a target date, at least by the week of Thanksgiving, the Monday or so, or even if you can get it done earlier. And then keep it a few days after when we're here, because during our conversations, we can talk to some people that haven't yet completed it. And kind of that window, maybe the 20th until 10th, maybe?
So a little more than two weeks, about two weeks, two weeks.
Yeah, ballpark, yeah.
Mr. Wilk?
Would you recommend, because we have something called Parent View, that we put a link out to all parents directly to take the survey? Would that give you guys just way too much potential, like?
Listen, our goal is to create access. So whatever your normal communication system, you know, when we run the stuff off, it just means that it's just going to increase your data information.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Williams and then Ms. Jesse.
I have two questions. One, where does the survey live? Is it something that individuals go to your site?
Your website.
Ours?
Your website.
Yeah, I think it would be best if we put it out before Thanksgiving, because people forget. That's just my opinion. And secondly, as we go through and agree or come to consensus on a lot of these things, are we going to then get more specific dates and a more, a hard copy timeline after we kind of say, okay, we'd like this, this, and this? Do we get that back? Because like, right now, we're saying, okay, maybe before Thanksgiving. Are we going to get like a more concrete timeline?
I will update the timeline that you have in your packet and have it tomorrow. I'll send it to Mary, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, that's a lot faster than I expected, I just, I appreciate that.
No, that's no problem. See, the thing is, we didn't want to take liberty, because this is from your direction.
Ms. Jesse.
Your form seems to be very efficient. You seem to do before, during, and after. And I noticed that in the materials that you sent to us, you have a transition phase, and maybe not, tonight is not the night to go into in detail. But can you briefly describe that to the board?
If you're talking about once you've hired a superintendent? Is that what you're talking about? Well, the board in their proposal, or request for proposal, they ask us to be available to do a board retreat with the new superintendent and the board. The other part of transition that you ask is to, I think had to do with the evaluation piece. Other than that, we always are in contact, but we formally, that's not part of the proposal that we sent. The one thing that's available to every new superintendent, and this is through the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. Wayne, why don't you comment on that?
Each new superintendent in Virginia has access to an executive coach that is part of the Virginia Association of School Superintendents' membership. So that your next superintendent would be entitled to select someone who would work with them on an ongoing basis over the course of that first year. That's a service that's free for that first year. Kevin is being a little modest, because Kevin has been executive coach to, at this point, probably 15 or 20. And I've coached, I'm currently coaching a new superintendent, and I've done that for, I think, 2027, over the course of the last 16 years.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And one, just sort of review, a process question for understanding and clarity for myself and others who may be watching. When we, when the ad goes out for the superintendent, I imagine because we're, the fine-tuned characteristics and qualities that we're looking for as a division won't be collected right away, because the ad goes out first with sort of a generic job description, the basics, and then those characteristics and qualities and traits come from the community input, board input, stakeholder input. And that's, that data is used as sort of a fine-tooth comb once we have a candidate pool to select from, or once you have a candidate pool to select from. Am I understanding that correctly? I just kind of want to go over it for the general public's understanding as well, because some people may say, well, you've already posted the ad, why should I comment? Or why is it important?
Taking to your point, you're going to have a dedicated section on your website for the superintendent search. Once you've approved the leadership profile, that should be there. The ongoing calendar should be there. The community engagement report and what we present to you should be there. And so you want to have that type of an access. It's a timing issue as we go through each of our steps. My hope is that we would have all this stuff up and available before we reach the winter break.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Just one last point I'd like to mention to the board. We may need to add, to receive the report from these gentlemen, possibly an extra meeting in December at some point. And so we will schedule that according as we move forward. Any further questions? Ms. Jackson?
I just had one follow-up. How is the qualitative data presented to us?
It's the survey. She's a qualitative?
The qualitative data will be, we have a survey documents that will have graphs. We also will disaggregate where appropriate if we're talking about students. And it will be part of our community engagement report. Again, public record.
Did she say quantitative or qualitative?
The quantitative data also will be summarized under the three questions. And it also will be organized to reflect the patterns that we've heard.
It's qualitative, thank you so much.
Okay. I want to thank you both for coming this evening. I can't thank you enough. I'm excited to move forward on this process. I'm looking forward to having the staff work with you all and all of us as we make this most important decision for this county that we're ever going to make here in the next few months. And so I want to thank the staff who've attended and who've zoomed in. We look forward to your support as we move forward with this process. I want to thank you both for coming up, and they will be available by email and everything. And we'll get you guys all the contacts if you don't have it already. At this point, without any further business, we will call this work session to adjourn. Thank you.